Welcome to the March 24 meeting of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman, and with me.
Emily Ennis, member.
Ed Duffy, member.
Brian Uench, member.
Peter Jackson, member.
Diane Colligan, secretary.
Bill Clark, planning director.
All right, we have two sets of minutes that look perfect as far as I'm concerned.
That's a first.
You'll have to watch what you say.
What?
The fourth of the tenth, right?
The third.
The third of the tenth.
How many times before, Jesus.
So what do you think, members?
I would move approval of the minutes on March 3.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
They're approved. Our next meeting.
Wait, did you do those together? I just did March 3.
March 10.
I thought we did them together.
No, one more time.
That was March 10 we did?
That was March 3.
All right, well, let's do March 10.
I would move approval of the minutes on March 3.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
All right. Our next meeting is going to be on the 14th of April, and then we're going to meet again on the 28th of April. We're going to start at 6:30, and the location will be determined depending on our agenda and the size of the room needed. The next item is...
Can I put it in there?
What?
On the 14th, you actually have... 6:45 will be an amended special permit and site plan review for a materials change and a discussion of the uses of the commercial space, allowed uses of the commercial space.
The 36th central?
The 36th central. There is a... 7 o'clock, there is 386 Highland Street Scenic Wall opening application. At 7:15, there would be an amended site plan approval for 310 Granite Ave, Milton Gas. They want to change the canopy and the pumps that were approved in 2007. And then we'll add whatever comes out of tonight to the end of...
So we'll meet here, is what you're saying?
Large basement.
How about here?
I will ask.
We can now go live from the basement, too.
I understand that, but this is a nicer space, even though the basement is better than it once was.
We will ask.
All right. One can only ask and hope, Bill. Our next thing is citizen speak. We are going to be discussing the oak tree later on.
The late oak tree.
At 7:00. The late oak tree later on. But in any event, citizen speak is available for citizens who want to speak on a topic of interest to the board. Even if it isn't of interest, if it should be of interest, those topics are also welcomed. So who wants to... What citizens would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, if you're going to speak at the public hearing, can you also speak citizen speak?
You can, but you shouldn't say the same thing. Okay, well, good. Introduce yourself for the... To the members and to the viewing public.
Margaret Donovan, 41 Central Avenue. This is probably the first time that I have a prepared statement. There was no one more stunned than I was to see that tree come down, but I also observed the decay in the center of the trunk and on the stump. The branches of the tree had helped hide the ugly facade of a building that the town allowed to be erected over the beautiful brick building formerly occupied by Henry's. The Henry's Building, which was depicted in the postcard that we all saw, has long since been gone. Let us move on without recrimination to work with the Conleys to develop that site into something we can all appreciate and enjoy. Thank you.
Anyone else want to take advantage of citizen speak, even though we're going to discuss the tree at 7:00 as part of the public hearing, and so it will be considered by us as part of the public hearing? Citizen speak is something else. So I suggest if you wanted to discuss the tree and have your comments considered by the board as part of the hearing, wait. The town planners report, please. Now, the reason we're having the town planners report is we have three minutes before our public hearing on zoning.
So the pressure's on to keep it to three minutes?
Well, no, because I think that we might have a little... We might bifurcate your report and do a little bit before the hearing and maybe a little bit after.
Really? I was hoping to keep it to three minutes.
All right, well.
Get in, get out.
We've only got two minutes to go.
Good. I've been dealing with issues, dealing with the Governor Stoughton estate RFP, dealing with sidewalks, some of the logistics for the opening of the RFP tomorrow. I was dealing with the RFQ, looking for an appraiser for that property. I went to Quincy City Hall last night with town administrator to give a wind turbine presentation to the West Quincy residents at the request of city councilor Al Mucci. And under the Green Communities, the town applied for a grant back in December. We found out day before yesterday that we received $157,100. I'd like to take and thank Henry McLean for all the time and effort he gave to helping me with that application. But we'll be doing projects in all of our buildings for energy conservation purposes.
Who's Henry McLean, Bill?
I'm sorry?
Who is he?
Henry McLean, he is the chairman of the Alternative Energy Committee for the town.
Thank you.
He's a local architect in town.
Thank you.
All right. That's a good start.
Dealing with your applications for the projects that I read out earlier.
Anything on the injunction of Quarry Hills?
We go to court April 21st.
Anything you can talk about?
I don't think we had discussed litigation.
No, obviously, it might be some other little tidbits.
We have... We've received all of our permits.
Tidbits about the litigation?
Not about the litigation. We've received all of our permits to date. We have in order conditions from conservation, or we've been approved for one. Later on, we're going to ask to withdraw our special permit. The chairman will lead you through that.
Later on today?
Tonight.
Good.
On to old business.
One thing that we might announce now is that the Beechwood Estates, which is 683-685 Rush Hill Road, has been continued. The definitive subdivision hearing has been continued to April 14. So if you had all announced this later on... But anyone... Hasn't it been continued?
It has, and I know that they sent an email around to their neighborhood association today. I know I called Mrs. Theveigvar.
Right.
So I know that the neighbors up there know, which is why we don't have some of the membership. I do know that part of their issue is they're doing soil tests and some waterworks at the request of the DPW. So they'll have more information at our next meeting.
What time are we continuing at, Joe? I'm guessing it's either going to be 7:30 or 7:45, looking at the list you gave us.
7:30?
7:30, okay.
Okay. And the board is agreeable to continuing it till then?
Mm-hmm.
And we have allowed her requesting the continuance from Mr. Burke, and it is granted.
Do you need a formal vote, or is the consensus okay?
We don't need a formal vote. Our next item is a public hearing on a zoning change. And this zoning change started a... This is a... At the special town meeting, we recommended approval of a zoning change to limit the height of accessory structures near rear property lines to 20 feet. Then it was brought to our attention that in an area of town, there was a retaining wall constructed in this area, and then they wanted to put an accessory structure on top of the retaining wall. And we said to the town meeting that we will come back with additional zoning to deal with situations where a retaining wall may be an issue, retaining wall within 20 feet or 30 feet of a rear lot line. And we also said that we would deal with the issue of side lot lines. We submitted zoning for the spring town meeting.
Spring 2011.
Spring 2011. For this town meeting, we submitted zoning to deal with retaining walls in the rear setback area, the rear exclusion zone, so to speak.
Right.
And we also submitted zoning having to do with both the height of accessory buildings and retaining walls in the setback area of side yards. It turns out that what we... The figure we used was 21 feet for the side yards, whereas the figure that we had used for the rear yards was 20 feet. And if possible, I think that we should adjust the side yard to 20 feet as well. And another...
In which district are you talking about?
In all districts. In all districts.
C. Are you talking about height or setback?
Height. This is height?
This is height of the accessory building.
20 feet in height in all setting districts.
And the other thing that we recently learned was that because we had advertised the special town meeting zoning article on alternate weeks rather than on successive weeks, the Attorney General decided that there was a defect.
From the last town meeting, the May 2010?
From the last town meeting.
Or the special town meeting, rather.
Of the last town meeting, and I suggest that we simply add a paragraph four, which is the same... What town meeting already passed, the special town meeting, it's the same thing. We'll pass it again and cure the defect. That seems to me to be the easiest way of going about... Going about business of this particular zoning article. There are a couple of changes from what we submitted, the planning board article that we submitted. One would be to make the height of the accessory structure 20 feet, and the other one would be to add the section that was passed at the prior town meeting. However, if you look to see the paragraph which sets out what it would read, the only change in those paragraphs from what we proposed would be the 21 feet would become 20, because the paragraph assumed that the zoning adopted at the special town meeting was in place.
And in fact, the AG had no problem with the zoning. It was simply that it hadn't been advertised correctly. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So who wants to speak on this zoning, if anyone?
I'm not sure we have any takers.
All right. I can understand why.
Including the members.
Who wants?
I have some questions.
Okay.
The way in this subsection C of Section 6...
Yeah.
On the front page, it says the setbacks are a certain amount of feet from a zone, from a side lot line, or within double that amount from any building.
Right.
So in the A and double A, it's 15 feet from the sideline, but within 30 feet of a building.
Yeah.
And it's similar going all the way through. So if there is a non-conforming building on a lot, the neighbor's lot, that then impacts the location of this building. He's got to push it further into his property, so he's being penalized by a non-conforming structure on another building.
It is true, but we depend on the Board of Appeals to...
You could get a variance, yeah.
To vary that restriction.
Why do we need to say?
This is already in there. This stuff is already in there. We're not adding the within.
Oh, this is in the existing zone.
It's already there. All we're adding is the two paragraphs up above.
Okay.
And then the two paragraphs.
And the two paragraphs. 1, 2, 3, and 4 is what we would be adding to these things.
Then my second question on the next page. This is new language, right?
Which?
This is the paragraph 1 of subsection D, Section 6. This is a new proposed language?
Well, this is how it would read with the retaining wall language. That's right.
It's the special town meeting.
Very confusing.
It's the special town meeting.
With the retaining wall added.
Right. It's the special town meeting. This is what we... It's... On page 2, what you see is what you will get by adopting the two paragraphs, 3 and 4.
So the special town meeting, we changed the height of an accessory building from the rear lot line. And now we're changing it from the side lot line and adding the language about a retaining wall. So the paragraph on page 2 takes care of the rear lot line that we added in September, but the AG disallowed simply because we hadn't advertised it correctly, and it's also adding the language about the retaining wall. The information on the first page changes the side lot lines and the retaining wall.
And the retaining wall language relates to both the side lots and the rear lot, right?
Yes. Two side lots and three is rear lots.
And we have changed the... And from what we submitted, paragraph 1 feet.
Yeah, it's very confusing.
We... It is confusing. We submitted 21 feet initially, but to make it the same as the next one.
No, I understand that, but what concerned me on this second page in that language is that it can't be within 30 feet of a rear lot line, but that 30-foot distance is already in the existing zoning, is what's being said?
Yes.
Okay, because that's way too much for Zone C, but I guess that, again, you'd have to go to the Board of Appeals.
Right.
I mean, it's not reasonable for Zone C to make it be 30 feet from the rear lot line, but that's the ZBA. But that's existing language, so we don't want to mess with that.
That's something for another day.
Really?
We hope there's another day.
Can I have your word on that?
Well, it's something for the members to think about.
Okay. I'll leave it at that for the moment.
Any other discussion? So I think the motion we would like is that we would recommend an amended article changing 21 to 20 in paragraph 1, adding a paragraph 4.
We don't recommend the amendment. The article is as it is. What we would do is recommend, this is our recommendation to town meeting.
Yes.
And to the warrant committee.
Okay, yes.
Because we can't change the article. We can only change the recommendation.
Okay. This is what we recommend.
Yes.
That's our... That's our motion.
I would move that the planning board recommend this language to town meeting and the warrant committee as being our recommendation on Article 36.
Now, what about a second?
Second.
All right. Who wants to discuss this?
You want to discuss this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we will somehow get through to the warrant committee. We'll figure that out.
I'm sure we can manage it.
Now, we've still got a little time. Shall we...
Continue Bill's report.
Still yet.
There he is.
No, he isn't.
I was thinking we might sign the Third Amendment for 88 Warf. Does everyone have a copy of that?
No. No, you passed that last time with the change that it said something made quote.
Oh, yes.
And it was inadequate.
Okay.
So you changed it to inadequate.
I did.
Fabulous.
Here, take a look at this. We're going to vote on this again.
Okay. Sorry, free copies will have to share.
Let me send you this.
Oh, that's right. Well, then you can't read it.
Okay.
The fourth paragraph had inadequate.
Did you check this?
I have checked this, and this is, once again, this is just like the amendments.
You've checked it.
You've checked it twice.
It's perfect, is what you're trying to say. It's absolutely perfect.
It is perfect.
Inadequate in the 24th. We changed from the 10th to the 24th.
So all in...
It's a blue pen.
I'll entertain a motion that we execute this Third Amendment to special permit for restaurant parking, land unit development, 88 Warf Street LLC owner, Warf Street Restaurant Group applicant.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. That's why there are four lines.
If you want to discuss it.
You didn't announce for a second, but I seconded it.
Yes, you did. Well done.
Okay, now, we're going to sign this.
Yeah.
And we're going to try and... We're going to sign three copies. Wait, wait, wait. Okay, right there.
I was going to sign here, in the line that's not there.
It doesn't matter if we all sign in the same place, except for you, Alex.
It is...
It does to a lawyer.
It's good to have these things the same.
We have three.
There are three.
And for once, we all have blue pens.
Lucky.
Yes.
Okay, this is... This goes there. This goes there. Now, we're going to do the 131 Elliott Street. Before we start, I just want to announce once again that 683-685 Rush Hill Road definitive subdivision hearing has been continued to April 14. Okay.
Can I just make one little announcement? Be careful with your papers. And also, because we have a mic back there, so that many people in the back can hear.
Okay, this is good. But don't hit the... Don't hit the mic.
Mic, okay.
Or don't tap on them as you...
And don't go too close to it, because it will, you know, vibrate.
We are continuing the hearing for a special permit and site plan review for the Henry's Building project at 131 Elliott Street. And now, Mr. Jackson, you have a... You have something to say with respect to the request for recusal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the planning board meeting of March... This is a letter that I've written to the chairman relative to a letter that we received and a testimony we received at the last session of this hearing. At the planning board meeting of March 3, 2011, Mr. Stephen Conley of Carrick Realty Trust applicants for the site plan review and special permit for the redevelopment of 131 Elliott Street read a letter requesting that I recuse myself from participation in this matter. Mr. Conley based his request on three premises. I have carefully reviewed Mr. Conley's letter and find no basis for his request. Therefore, I'm notifying the board and Mr. Conley that I will not recuse myself from full participation in this process. Mr. Conley's letter identifies three areas of concern. One, refusal to implement the zoning bylaw regarding FAR bonus according to the language and intent of the bylaw approved by town meeting in 2007. I, along with other members of the planning board, have been conducting an analysis of the feasibility of preserving the large black oak tree on the site as a condition for awarding an FAR bonus for preservation of natural resources. To date, the board has taken no action relative to awarding this bonus. My actions to date have been a positive effort to implement the zoning, the zoning bylaw, and done in concert with other members of the board. Number two, a conflict of interest in his role as planning board member reviewing this development application for a special permit approval while being a member of the permitting team for a competing development at 2 Adams Street Milton, a development which has not broken ground on its new building. My response is that prior to being elected to the Milton Planning Board, my firm, Park Planning Associates, was landscape architect consultant to the development team for the residences at Milton Village. After election to the planning board, I recused myself from participation on planning board actions related to this project. I have no personal or financial interest in the 2 Adams Street development that would create a conflict of interest in the 131 Elliott Street matter. Third, he says that in our opinion, Mr. Jackson has acted with unclean hands in implementing the RFP for the oak tree, an RFP process which the board entrusted him to execute in a fair and judicious manner. My response is that the planning board requested that I prepare a first draft of a request for proposals and a list of potential arborists because I have specific professional expertise in arboricultural matters. The draft I prepared of both the RFP and the list of arborists was reviewed and amended by the planning board with full participation and input by Conley Construction. by the Planning Board with full participation and input by Conley Construction. Mr. Conley requested several changes in the scope of work contained in the RFP, and these were incorporated. He made no suggestion relative to the list of arborists. The Planning Board received only one responsive proposal to the RFP and awarded the contract to that firm, Largess Forestry. I did not know and had never worked with Largess Forestry prior to receiving their proposal. All advertising, receipt and evaluation of proposals, and award and execution of the contract were done jointly by all Planning Board members in strict accordance with all procurement regulations. As this letter demonstrates, there is no basis for Mr. Conley's request that I recuse myself from Planning Board deliberations on this matter. I will continue to conduct myself in a fair and professional manner in the best interests of the Town of Milton as we review this proposal. And while I've got the floor, I'd like to just say a few words about this special permit process. The mixed-use overlay zoning is not as of right. Issuing a special permit is discretionary and is best served by a cooperative relationship between the proponent and the town to develop a project that is in the best interests of both. Therefore, it cannot be an adversarial process and depends on the goodwill and cooperation of both parties. So far, the current process has not gotten off to a good start. I'm committed to achieving a beautiful, quality, successful development on this site, and I'm hopeful that the other participants in this process are also. Thank you.
Okay, I think that I agree with your analysis.
Thank you.
As everyone in town knows, there was a black oak tree on this site which has been cut And the black oak tree was a significant natural feature. And in fact, in my view, it was the only significant natural feature on this site. And the zoning provides for a bonus in floor area ratio under the following circumstances. If the Planning Board determines that the area of the lot in the business district is the same as the qualifying lot area, and we've determined that, and that a development will preserve, if feasible, or replace in kind one or more significant natural features on the site and provide significant amenities to the public, the Planning Board may permit a bonus for a higher FAR not to exceed fifteen percent for a higher FAR. Now, one question I have is that with the removal of the tree, the site no longer has any significant natural features. And under those circumstances, it would seem to me that a bonus is not available. And I have, I've heard the argument that, well, the tree used to be a significant natural feature in the past, and that it was only removed because it was absolutely necessary to remove it, and that a replacement in kind of the tree will occur, and that a bonus should be available. And I incline to believe that if, in fact, the tree had to be removed, that it wasn't feasible to save it, then possibly the Board could consider this argument. But I have looked at the landscaping plan, and it is, in my view, entirely inadequate to constitute replacement in kind of a two-hundred-year-old oak tree. So, Mr. Conley, what do you have to say for yourself?
Stephen Conley, applicant, one thirty-one Elliott Street. First, I'd like to read a short statement in response to Mr. Jackson's statement earlier. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jackson and I have a fundamental difference of opinion on his violation of conflict of interest law. The standard to be used is an objective standard, not a subjective one. MGL two sixty-eight A twenty-three B three states, quote, "Act in a manner which would cause a reasonable person, having knowledge of the relevant circumstances, to conclude that any person can improperly influence or unduly enjoy his favor in the performance of his official duties, or that he is likely to act or fail to act as a result of kinship, rank, position, or undue influence of any party or person," unquote. Mr. Jackson is a member of the Two Adam Street Development Team, a project where the existing units have not sold and the new building has not broken ground. It is a current project. Mr. Jackson is also on the approval board for the, for our development at one thirty-one Elliott Street, a development in direct competition with Two Adam Street for potential buyers. Any reasonable person can conclude that there is, at a minimum, an appearance of a conflict of interest, and Mr. Jackson should recuse himself from these proceedings. So that's my response to Mr. Jackson. And now, I'd like to touch on the oak tree. The issue of the oak tree and the awarding of an FAR bonus for the development has delayed this approval process since November of two thousand and ten. Throughout this process, our company had incurred significant liability with the knowledge of having a tree on our property that was a high risk for failure and a public safety hazard because of its proximity to the street. The heavy decayed leaves and limbs overhanging the sidewalk and street endangered our fellow residents in the business district. None of the, none of the alternatives discussed by the Board or interested residents fully addressed or remedied the issue of liability or the public safety hazard with the oak tree. Suggestions of redesigning the building to maintain the tree's root zone or hazard pruning the tree would not have absolved us from liability if an incident occurred and someone got hurt or killed as a result of said incident. The Planning Board's position to date is clear that without the natural feature, which is the tree, on the site, that the applicant is not entitled to bonus FAR for the development. We remove the tree from the site, thus removing our exposure to liability regarding the tree and a public safety hazard from the business district. So tonight, I am here with Warren Daniel, Principal of Daniel Architects, to present our building without an FAR bonus and some design changes to the north elevation of the building, which the Board expressed concern about. And I'd like to have Mr. Dan.
Well, we're going to hear from your arborist, if you care to produce him.
I don't have an arborist.
All right, I think that we'll hear from our arborist. Mr. Largess.
Yes.
Would you step down, please?
Alex, he can sit here.
No, he can sit right there.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
You look tan.
Glad to be back to Milton, one of my favorite towns, and I have my proud hat of the Blue Hills, one of the greatest urban parks in America that you should all be proud of. I was in the state of Florida when I got the news about the oak. It was pretty devastating to me. Ole growth is my life's work. It was an ole growth tree. It did have its problems, you know, in the report, I talked about the top having some rot. You know, I went into the trunk and, you know, incremented cord and didn't find any rot. So I was gone when the tree went down. I wish I could have been there to inspect. It was so ironic, because I was in a forest called The Strand when I got the news, which is the rarest, one of the rarest forests in America, if not the world. And that day, I found a thousand-year-old ole growth tree, a bald cypress. And I don't know if you've heard of the ghost orchids, but they're the only place in the world where these orchids grow. So I was with the National Geographic Society and taking photos. I was carrying the cameras. And I was in the tree that day that I got the news. It was ironic. And it was an ole growth cypress, about eleven hundred years old, completely hollowed out. I sat inside it like a room and just marveled at, you know, the last tree of its kind in Florida, away from development, so it's very hard to be cut down. So it was, it was tough. It was an emotional thing, but as a professional arborist, I have to realize that things like this do happen. The tree has been removed. You can argue day and night, was it a hazard, wasn't it a hazard? It wasn't a hazard to me. You know, ole growth trees are extremely strong. I have talked to the man that removed the tree, Tree Tech, Andy Felix, who's a wonderful arborist. He was very open to talking to me about the tree. He had no idea that it was in the news as much, the tree, when it was removed. And when seventy-five people showed up, he was kind of shocked. And then the Boston Globe was on a cellphone within hours. He was kind of a little terrified by it. But he has talked to me today, so if people are in the town, any artist or anyone would like wood from the tree trunk. The tree trunk was eight feet across down at the base, so if he has parts of this trunk, he had to split it up because he didn't have a log truck big enough to carry this ole growth tree. And I don't know if anyone's interested, but if you want, I can contact him. He's willing to work with the town to retrieve some of the tree where they could use maybe in some manner to remember the tree. I also brought a picture that I wanted to, maybe we could get it on the, can you show it up? How would be the picture for that? Can we zoom in on that? We want to remember the tree, because this is kind of its funeral and.
It's good, yeah.
You know, it really was, it was, it's an ole growth tree, so it's a half of one percent left in the United States. It's very rare that you have a tree like this anywhere. The tree I was at in the Everglades, I saved the Oakland Forest down in Rhode Island. It's twenty acres. In New England, we have probably less than a half of one percent left of these original trees. That tree was there when, when there was a forest there. It grew on that riverbank well before the factory was there. Two hundred and two years old. Maybe we'll have a little moment of silence, and I would like to read the poem Trees by Joyce Kilmer tonight, so we can all grieve. I know there was a lot of grieving. People are very connected with trees. I was thrilled to see so many people cared about the tree and how much press it got. It is the most famous oak tree in Massachusetts right now. I plan on trying to maybe write a story about it, about the whole process. There's nothing we can do. You know, think about two hundred and two years old, and in one day, it can be gone, which it is. So we'll read the poem Trees. And then, anyone have any questions? This is by Joyce Kilmer from New Jersey. "I think I shall never see a poem as lovely as a tree. A tree whose lovely mouth is pressed against the earth's sweet flowing breast. A tree that looks at God all day and lifts its leaves to pray. A tree that may wear, summer wear, a nest of robins in her hair. A pond whose bosom snow has lain will hopefully live with pain. Poems are made by fools like me, but only God can make a tree." So if there's any questions, I did the report. I wasn't exactly accurate on the trunk. There was some rot. I still don't call it a hazard, because heart rot is not hazardous.
Was it, it had some heart rot?
It had some heart rot. I got some pictures here. So it did have some rot, and a lot of ole growth trees do. I thought it had a solid trunk all the way up. I really wanted to do an autopsy on the trunk, but we had some rot. You can see the heart rot, which was probably a rock or maybe some metal. But a lot of ole growth trees, when they get older, they're like us. They get cavities in their teeth, and they're very much like us. There are bark changes, and they become bald, like my head. The balding bark.
Is that a hazard, that?
I wouldn't say it was a hazard, but I wouldn't say the tree was perfect either, you know?
Would you?
Heart rot really isn't a hazard compared to sap rot. The reason that I didn't call it a hazard is because it had no mushrooms, it had no sap, which would be gross on the trunk, it had no limb drop, and it had no lean, excessive lean. But, you know, it did have some rot. There, you know, it's right there in the pictures. So you can see this trunk, that's at the very base, you know. I wish I could get to the trunk. I want to go to the trunk and do a tree ring analysis to see how close I was to extrapolation. So it was really hard to judge, because I have the biggest tree core in New England. And when I went in, I didn't hit rot. You know, the rot's in the very center, but that tree's eight feet across at the base. So it's very hard. This was ten feet up. As you can see, as the tree went further up, it was less rot. So it could have lived for a long time.
And been strong?
Well, it's very strong. Oak trees are one thing, that's one thing I can say as an arborist, I don't care about saying to save them, because I was at Hurricane Katrina after the hurricane, and I was on a task force to look at the tree damage. And the live oaks and the oak trees down by the Southern Yacht Club did live, even the rotted ones. They're, you know, it's a tree, if you go into a forest and find these wolf oaks, they kind of die standing. So they're not a tree that really fails. And when they do, they start to drop their limbs. So, you know, we call trees hazard, but does anyone have a guess of how many people died on the highways in America last year? Over forty thousand. How many people died by trees? I haven't looked it up, but I bet you it's a lot lower than bee stings or dog bites or things like that, you know? But we have, we have a society where you can get sued over anything, so you can see people's point of view. I'm the tree hugger, and I try to save them all, but this was a cool one to work on. You can see that that one, that's further up, it's a lot less, you know, pretty sound. It had pretty sound limbs all the way up. Hopefully, I get to have, you know, get to do an autopsy, maybe tomorrow. I finally got word of where the tree was. It's top secret, so I don't want to put Tree Tech in danger or anything, but if you guys are interested, just call me, anyone, I'll give you my card. I plan on going out there, and if somebody would like to retrieve some of the wood for something, it would be kind of neat. There was, the largest oak in Maryland died. It was called the Y oak. The town of Y, Maryland, if you look it up, was a white oak that was thirty-two feet around, six hundred years old. And there was actually a state park built around it. It became a tourist destination for this tree. And when it did die, they used the oak tree as, as, as a, you know, all the different parts of it, to different states and to, you know, to use it. It would be kind of neat to use it as something, to remember the tree. It was just a great tree. It was great to be part of it. I'm sad the way it ended. I feel bad. I wish it could end in a different way, but there's nothing you can do when it's cut down. I can't, I can't glue it back.
Did you think the tree was unsafe?
I don't think the tree was completely unsafe, but it wasn't completely sound either. So it wasn't, you know.
Could it have been made safe?
I think it possibly, you know, if we had worked on it, maybe really cut limbs back and maybe put a plaque and surrounded it with something. You know, I wish we could have tried, but I'm more of a tree hugger and try, you know, I think trees are real, a lot more important than other people. But there's nothing we can do about it now, so.
No, but we.
All right, let's put it this way, it wasn't ready to fall down the next day, that's for sure. But, you know, fifty years down the road, twenty years down the road, it could have, could have collapsed. But maybe if they saved it, you know, and it started to decline, maybe they could have cut it then or done something then. You know, I thought it was kind of drastic, but I can see people's emotions, you know, the companies trying to, they got a lot on the line, they're a small company trying to make it too. So I, I put myself in both sides. You know, I save trees all over the country. I've been involved in huge projects, including, you know, parks and the Oakland Forest, trees in New Jersey. I had kids protesting to cut trees, trees down at one time. You know, I've been through all of them. And through the times, I've always put myself in the shoes of others, you know? I know it's been a real tough issue for everyone, but I was proud. I had kids protesting to cut trees, uh, trees down at one time. You know, I've been through all of them. And through the times, I've always put myself in the shoes of others, you know. I know it's been a real tough issue for everyone, but I was proud of the Boston Globe covering the story. I was really proud of the town, your town. Extremely proud of this town, the way they acted about the tree. The write-ups, the blogs were incredible to read. And that's my life. I'm the voice of the forest. God put me on earth to be the voice for the trees and that's why I'm here tonight, to talk about the death of this tree. And I, and I felt it. I feel it when they die, you know. The Strand Forest, which is the ghost orchid forest, if you look it up online, TV movie or a famous movie was written about it, Merrill Street, called Adaptation. You know, and that forest was cut in 1944. Think about that. A virgin stand, 81,000 acres. They clear cut 1,000-year-old trees. And the tree that I was in was one of 40 that was left that they couldn't get to. You know, think about that, the forest with the rarest orchids, home of the Ivory-billed Woodpecker, the rarest bird in the world, home of mountain lions, which I saw when I was there. The only place left in the whole east where there's mountain lions. You know, these, these things, think about, think about where we are in Milton. You know, 200 years ago, these black oaks were everywhere. These white oaks were everywhere. They were 20, 30 feet around. We had this immense forest and we cut it all, you know. So these remnants mean a lot to me because they're really uncommon. You won't find another 15-foot black oak around Boston too often. So if there's any questions about the tree, I did the best I could. It was an honor to work for you guys.
Question?
Yes.
Do you have a picture of the trunk that's left?
I got some pictures. You know, I was hoping some people in town had more photos, but I'm going to go to the trunk, hopefully tomorrow, and take a look. I'm really curious to see how much rot and, you know, I want to do it for my records too. And I want to do tree rings. So if you, if you want these photos, I can get more.
I'd like to see a picture of the remaining stump.
Yeah. Okay, well, there's some there and I'll try to get some.
See it there.
Is the stump here?
Yeah, that's what... Well, the stump's still down there.
I mean, is there a stump here?
Well, it's got some lower pictures, yeah, there's some pictures of the stump there.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, there's stumps and then 10 feet up and I can mark them on the back, which are which.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Does the stump look like this?
There's the stump.
Yeah. So you had heart rot in the middle. You had good sapwood. You know, trees have sapwood on the outside, hardwood on the inside. So the hardwood...
Any infestation damage here that you saw?
Yeah, I think there was some metal there of some kind, you know, at one time. The tree was an urban tree, so it was a tough spot. I mean, most urban trees live 35 years. That's the average lifespan. 202 years is off the charts.
But you saw no infestation damage here?
You mean termites, are you mean?
Yeah. Termites? Did you say?
Yeah.
I didn't see any, any, I think the heart rot was more, you know, just age, like cavity in your teeth, you know. These old trees that I study, like the one in, in Florida, you know, you go inside it and the otters were living in there. So these otters hadn't seen people, so they went out into the water and I climbed in the tree and this otter just was almost on its hind legs chapping at me. But you think about these, these trees, what their habitats are, you know, people look at a tree and say there's a hole in it. I look at a tree and say that's a condominium for wildlife. You know, old growth, white oak trees have 47 mammals and birds that depend on it. You know, your town of Milton is beautiful because of the Blue Hill and you come down this road, it is just, the trees are incredible in this town. So the loss of a big one was kind of sad and it's too bad.
Just one other question to Twig.
Yeah.
If that hole contained termite damage, would you still be of the same opinion that the tree was not dangerous?
I would say it wasn't really dangerous because the sapwood is so strong in oak. If it was other species, possibly. But, you know, it was on its way of becoming decayed, so it did have some problems. But, you know, it by far wasn't ready to fall over. I mean, you know, it's a small hole compared to the main trunk.
But have you actually looked at the tree, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
I looked at the tree. I would say, right now I estimate it to be 74% sound, so that would mean...
That was the crown?
Well, the trunk. I looked, I did a...
But you only caught in eight inches and the thing was...
Well, I looked at the tree trunk once it was cut.
Right.
So looking at this, it's about 24%.
All right, no, that's, I just wanted to know if you, if you saw the crown.
Yeah. And the crown, it was similar, so I've really learned a lesson in this. That crown that had rot was about 70, you know, 25, 23%. So they kind of matched each other. So I would say the tree had 75% life left in it, which was pretty good. You know, any hazard tree would be 50%.
Including, including the base?
Yeah, the base, the, the actual thing that holds the tree up is the cammium, the outside, you know, the sapwood. That inside isn't as much as far as holding the tree up. You know, the hardwood is dead wood. It's dead cells.
Dead wood.
So, and it was rotted at the base. It wasn't rotted all the way up to the top by any means, you know, but it was starting to rot.
Okay.
And they were going to do construction. So it would have been neat if maybe they could cut a lot of limbs off and put a plaque and put a thing around it. That's in my dream world, but...
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you show that picture you have of the tree and leaf, the one that you just showed?
Yes. This was taken by the name, uh...
Yeah.
His name is...
Tom Palmer.
Thomas Palmer. Now, I, I don't know about this guy, but this guy, you guys have some people in this town that are world-class tree and naturalists. Thomas Palmer, I've been around with all the top naturalists in the United States. Thomas Palmer is an absolute treasure for your town. The other guy is Norman Smith over at that museum. Those two guys, I mean, you, you, you really have a treasure. And this, this photograph, what a photographer. But, you know, it would have really been neat, another thing would have been neat if we could have let it leaf again, if we knew, if we could have somehow got acorns, if we could take it back. That's the only thing when you remove a tree, you can't take it back. You know, it's death, so.
I just have a question about that. Will you look at the picture and see if you see any tip dyeback on that?
No, there's no tip dyeback. It's a very healthy crown. That's why, you know...
Isn't that how, how trees die, beginning by tip dyeback?
Well, the tip dyeback can be a sign of root loss and, you know, like the trunk was very, I was surprised to see any kind of rot because the trunk had such healthy, you know, it had no sap rot, it had no indications, but it's a lesson learned. So what I'm working on now is with the quarrying people, I've written to them about this. Next time that I do a big tree and there's a problem, I'm going to get a core that goes right through it and study the whole core. They don't have one. They're thinking about making one just for my drill bit, which would be kind of neat if we could accord it and seen and then we could decide, have decided, you know.
Just one more question to Twig. If you did have a longer screw, would you change your opinion as to the condition?
Well, I would have seen it decay and it would have been in the report, you know. I could only go in so far and I have the biggest core there is, you know, like the 18. But when a tree's that big, it's hard. But I'm learning all the time, old growth and it's special, you know. There is some nice old growth. I'm sure there's some old growth still in the town. I'd like to come and inspect the town more. I am now a friend of the Blue Hill, a proud member of the Blue Hill. Milton's part of my heart. It's, it's absolute, you know, sometimes you don't realize when you live here what a cool place to be part of Boston, to be part of Blue Hill, the whole history of that factory, of the ice cream history, of the write-ups in the paper about Karys Grumsky being underneath it, having ice cream socials in the 50s, the Civil War, crackers made at the place. I mean, and just think of the tree, the history of the tree, when that was a river, when there was salmon coming up it. The Forbes Estate has some outstanding old growth trees on it. I was only there once. It'd be neat to go back and do, they have the biggest black cherry I've ever measured in New England, completely rotted, completely rotted, still standing. Because old growth trees are pretty hard to knock down. They're just so massive. And they're, you know, a German scientist and arborist had done studies on these old growth trees and he's trying to save them all even though they're hollow and he gets very controversial. And, you know, it can go on and on and on. It was just, it was, it really was, it really was great to be here, to be part of the black oak. I'm very sad that it's gone. I will miss it. I'm so glad I got to be with that tree. I'm glad I took a lot of pictures of it. It was just amazing, the press that it got. I'm so proud that that tree got so much press. It deserved it. After 200 years, you know, it can't speak, but I can for it. That's a lot of windstorms, a lot of development, a lot of, lot of things that happened. Think about the 38 Hurricane. That thing went through, the 38 Hurricane, Blue Hill had the highest wind gust recorded pretty much in New England, the history of New England, correct? That night? September 21st, 1938. So, I mean, it did live through that. It lived through a lot of things, a lot of wars. It was there when Quincy, which Quincy was alive and 202 years old?
The son.
The son. And he was president.
Also.
He was president. He lived right near the tree. And, you know, that's, that's pretty cool. New England is a special place, man. Special place. And the oak trees, by the way, is the American symbol. It's, it's the, you know, if you go on American Forest's website, which is the National Association for Forest, American Forest, they have a magazine. The American, the oak tree is the America symbol, like the bald eagle is the bird. And that was in 2002 or something like that. So it's also, you know, it's an American thing too. It's a symbol. I wish I had put a flag on it, you know. But let's save the rest of the oak trees, even if they're rotted a little bit and maybe we can get a bigger core and work on it. And it was great to be with your board. I know your volunteers. It's great. I live in Jamestown, Rhode Island, very much like this. It's old New England. And I think the whole process was great. You know, as sad as it turned out, I want to have it a positive. You know, maybe we can learn from this. The next time that I get a call of an old tree, maybe we can learn. I can talk about the oak tree in Milton that happened. And I, I hope the place is developed. And I hope it becomes a special place.
Two questions, Mr. Twig. From time to time, we do have bald eagles in Milton, so you'll know, and I've seen them on more than 10 occasions. And number two, you made reference to the Ivory-billed Woodpecker.
Yes.
Extinct.
Ah.
I was trying to ask you. Go ahead.
Well, let's put it this way. It's kind of ironic because that day that the tree was cut, I got some information on the Ivory-billed Woodpecker, that it's possibly alive, more than possible.
Arkansas?
Yes. I have a recording of the first Ivory-billed since 1940, confirmed report, a recording on a tape at my house. Sorry, only three people in the world have it, but you'll be reading about it in the news probably in another year or so. It's at Cornell being analyzed.
Is it from Arkansas?
In Arkansas.
Yeah, the swamps.
In the swamps.
Yeah.
There's still some swamps. Swamps are places where big trees can still grow, because I was in that swamp and walking through and I don't know if you've heard of the ghost orchids, but they're the rarest orchids in the world. The Strand Swamp is the biggest swamp in the world. It's a tropical forest. And when, when you go through, the alligators, you know, everyone's so scared of alligators, including me, I'm from New England. Oh, look at this, you know, 400-pound alligator. They ran away every time. I saw it 50 at a time on a rock, they would dive away from me. I was totally shocked at that. So, you know, it was great. You know, I wish that tree was still there. I wish we could have built it and built around it. It would have been cool, but there's nothing we can do about it now. We have to move on. I hope it works out for the town. I put myself in his shoes too, the developer. I, you know, I'm in business. I know how hard it is. I, I've met him. He's a good guy. We had a sure difference of opinion because I was the voice of the tree and he's the voice of the developer. And there, there is a big difference. It'd be nice if we could somehow get closer on our trees' development. You know, it would have been neat if we could have tried on this one. But maybe next time. I'm a positive guy. You can't let it hang you down. You can't let it drag you down.
Well, don't do that.
Yeah. Thanks again.
Thank you so much for coming in, Mr. Lawrence.
And if people want parts of that tree, call me or I'll leave my card and we'll get in touch with Mr. Tree Tech. Alex, Andy...
Felix.
Andy Felix, very nice guy. And he said he would help us. He'd help your town, he'd bring them back.
I think that that sounds like a, a good project.
Okay, great, thanks.
Nice jacket, too.
Oh, this is a treat for you. I mean, this is a treat for you, for the town, for the board. And these are the other reports that I hadn't delivered.
Nice to see you again, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now, as I understand it, is this the original one?
Yes. I'm not sure they were in our...
I didn't, I didn't go on. Before we, we move beyond the tree, since I gather the tree is not going to be an issue, who else was, does anyone else have stuff to contribute to the statements about the tree? How about...
30 Canton Avenue. Well, now we know why Mr. Conley needed to remove the 200-year-old black oak, his concern for public safety. His concerns for public safety are pretty hard to stomach. Since the entire time he has owned this property, he has never once shown concern for the public safety. Mr. Conley never tried to prune the actual and obviously rotted limbs of the oak the entire time he's owned the property. Mr. Conley never once appeared concerned that his building has a FEMA-designated red X, which means his building is too dangerous to enter. No shoring up the structure, no attempt to make it a little more safe. With all his concerns for public safety, Mr. Conley never hired a police detail March 9th. In an area of high commuter traffic, he had Tree Tech chop away. What is hoped for is that Mr. Conley should lose any extra buildable footage allowed and that, that should be transferable if the building is sold to another developer. And if possible, the height restrictions might be made smaller. That the area where this 200-year-old oak stood should not be developed and the largest possible tree, a black oak or perhaps a heritage elm, be planted on that spot. And Mr. Conley is made to plant as many 10, 12, 14-caliper trees around the area where shade trees are needed. And lastly, the town must take steps to prevent this sort of developer from removing champion[1577.46] removing champion trees and shade trees ever again. I am giving, I didn't bring it, I forgot it, the planning board a copy of Grafton, Massachusetts Shade Tree Ordinance as a starting point for Milton to come up with its own shade tree protection plan. This should start by protecting large old trees on public property and trees on private property where trees are close enough to public sidewalks and streets, which will benefit the public from their shade. And I'm mad as hell.
He held it in, though.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Keith Mills. I reside at thirty-nine Hawthorne Road. And my wife and I also own the little wine, bread, and cheese across the street from the development. You know, I guess it's somewhat of a mood issue about the tree. I think we've probably heard a lot about the tree. But a couple of things I just kind of wanted to bring to the board's attention. One of the things that kind of irked me a little bit was people taking kind of a shot at Pete Jackson. And although Pete and I kind of agree to disagree on a lot of different things, and I'm sure will continue to do that, I've always found him to be a man of honor and principle, and I'm proud to count him as both my neighbor and my friend. You know, we live in a small town here, and you can't help bumping into each other on certain boards, certain committees, whatever. I mean, it's the way a small town is. And I think if we started recusing everybody from everything, you know, I don't know, I mean, it'd be hard for us to kind of do business together. And I think, I think what we said about Peter is somewhat inaccurate, and, you know, and I just wanted to let people know, as an independent person, that, you know, yeah, I didn't take that very well. I had some issues to say about the tree, but I think, you know, like I said before, the tree's been talked about a lot. Another thing that kind of makes me, or shows concern is, if the tree can be taken down kind of the way that it is, you know, I kind of feel like the message is sent, what about my issues about parking and construction? I mean, are any of my views or my neighbors' views going to be taken into account or consideration? Or is it just, we're going to just move and be expedient whenever we need to? And, you know, I would like to suggest to the board that, you know, you know, this is a big project, and it could be a really great project, but we also have to be smart about it. And, you know, to do something to ruin businesses, to ruin the neighborhoods and that type of stuff, we really need to kind of take a look at that. So, you know, I guess, you know, kind of, my concern, again, is back to is, you know, as we move forward in the project, and I'm sure we will, and, you know, and Steve and I will agree to disagree with things, I just want to make sure that all of a sudden, you know, people won't care about parking, and all of a sudden, all the construction trucks will be parked out in front of all our businesses, and we can't do business, do business there. Or when other people are, you know, going to park there, that they don't take into account, you know, that, you know, we are a small business community there. And then again, I'd like everybody to kind of, as we go through this process, you know, to kind of think about the big picture. Sure, it's nice to have development, and this could be a really nice building, but, you know, the sacrifices that are needed to be done, maybe we can try to minimize those as we go forward. That's all I'd say.
Well, any special permit that gets issued is going to be quite detailed, and it is going to address the issues that are raised. Any further comments on the tree?
Since a couple of questions were asked. Bernie, you asked a question about.
General case of.
Oh, I'm Fred Brink, thirty Canton Avenue. You asked about, you know, you're looking for evidence that this tree was really needed to be cut down or not, or it was rotten. I watched and photographed the entire process, because I was really livid, of topping it off first, so that there was no question that it had to come down, and then cutting it down, stage by stage. I have timestamp photographs of every single cut that Tree Tech did. If anybody wants to use them for real expert forensic, and I'm triggered to offer that because of what Twig said, I'd love to have some arborist look at it carefully and get that settled, if this tree was a danger to the public and couldn't be pruned constructively and had to come down. I'm not an expert, no more of an expert than Mr. Conley, I'm sure. And the only two opinions I heard after it was down and the contractor propped it up for everyone to see the last cut, I was still not convinced. I didn't hear anybody say anything like, yes, there, it's proof. I heard people conjecturing. And the really only two opinions I heard were by Mr. Conley, who sort of said, I told you so, and the tree cutter he hired, who had his chainsaw in his hand, and what else is he going to say, but it needed to be cut. So you can't, you can't listen to him, because that was his job. He cut it. I did not see, I watched everything. The branches were clean for a long time, everyone coming down again and again and again. About twelve, I think it was maybe the third next to the last cut, twelve to thirteen, fourteen feet up, is when I first saw a black smudge. It's in the photographs. I'd cut, as things were lifted off, I tried to take a picture of the face of each piece cut off. I just did not believe that it was rotten until I went away, came to get a cup of coffee, came back, and there it was, shown to me as proof. But I saw an awful lot of live wood on the edge. And I knew enough to know from Boy Scout days that all that bulk in the middle could be hollow, because that's just dead wood in any tree. It's not the live wood. The stuff is up near the edge, and the edge was bright yellow and full of sap all the way up. All those cuts, every, right to the roots. If you look at the tree, somebody else pointed out the way it scooped out, it had to be rotten. It wasn't. That's the way the branches were meeting the ground, and those were roots. Those were the root patterns going up. So I'm just not convinced. And if anybody would like to see this and can try to convince me, I'll give them all these photographs. And I do believe still that if it had been pruned the way that the town hired arborist suggested, and by the way, there was no effort to prune the bad stuff first. I think they needed it to stand on as the cutter with a chainsaw needed it to stand on. So he didn't cut any of the dead stuff. He started at the top and cut it down. But I came finally to the conclusion, standing there, that Mr. Conley had left the tree unpruned intentionally for years, hopefully to speed its demise. And when that didn't happen, he took matters into his own hands and just cut it down and snubbed his nose at the whole town. Sorry.
My name's Ellen Denoyer. I live on Capen Street in Milton. I wanted to ask Mr. Conley, how long have you owned the property?
Since two thousand.
Since two thousand.
I think that you could make a statement, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was just the only thing, because I just didn't know that piece of information. Yes, I did want to say several things. I would like to suggest that if Mr. Conley really wanted to develop the property, he's had quite a lot of time to do that. I agree with the previous speakers about Mr. Conley's disregard for public safety over many years. As a pedestrian, I've been extremely frustrated at his inability to clear the snow and ice from the sidewalk, which is a hazard to pedestrians, particularly along Elliot Street. That's a major thoroughfare for pedestrians, and that snow and ice have repeatedly not been cleared over many years. I think that the quotes that I was able to note from Mr. Conley about the tree, I would say, apply to the building as well. Mr. Conley used words such as significant liability, high risk for failure, endangering residents, and a public safety hazard. I think all of those things apply to the building. And I think it's disgraceful that that building has been allowed to deteriorate, that it has not been used, it has not been maintained, and it has not been demolished. And I believe that that is a thousand times more of a safety hazard than the tree ever was. And I think it's disgraceful, and I think it's a disgraceful way to treat the town and to treat the neighbors. So, as you can tell, I am also mad as hell. I think the board, to the extent that you have jurisdiction to do that, I think you should require that the tree would be salvaged and that it be used in an appropriate way. I don't know if people have read about it, but there's a tree on the Olmsted property in Brookline, which has to come down because of its health, similar age, and they are making an event of it. They've invited people to come and see the tree. They're salvaging the wood. They're inviting art students to do things with the wood. They are taking it down as an absolute last resort, and they're treating it appropriately. And I think that, to the extent that this board or other officials of the town have jurisdiction, I think they should require the building demolition. And even if it's not required, I think it's extremely in Mr. Conley's interest to demolish that building as soon as possible. I think it's a public safety hazard, and I think it would show perhaps some goodwill to the town, which clearly people feel at the moment is sorely lacking. And I did want to just mention one other thing. I also support Pete Jackson. As Keith mentioned, I think he's extremely fair, and I think he has the best interests of the town at heart. I'm not at all sure that Mr. Conley does at this point in time, or since he has owned the property, and since he has had many years to develop the property. I think the fact that Pete has worked on another development in the meantime simply shows that other developers are able to move ahead with projects in a way that Mr. Conley has not been. So I support Pete. I think he's very fair, and I'm very sorry about Mr. Conley's having taken the tree down. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eric Gedman. I'm a planning board selectman.
Tell me the name.
Town meeting member from precinct eleven. Although this project isn't in my precinct, I say to Mr. Conley, shame on you. I'm a mechanical designer. I have a cousin that's an architect. Now, you and I know that you could have worked around that tree. You never come up with one plan for a particular project, correct? We both know that. You could have worked around that tree. You could have pruned the tree over the years. And actually, it's nice to see that you're staying here today, as from the last meeting, you walked out when you were getting, catching the heat. It's nice that you're sitting here now to hear it. But you could have done better. And it's, today was obvious that your real motive is you're worrying about the Adams Street project, as to what you may lose as far as with the finished project. But it's just, it's just a disappointment. It's just such a waste that you would do that. And it gives me a good idea of what the abutters can expect of you coming up with this new proposal, what you're going to leave them with, because it's, you seem to be the typical developer, come in town, make my money, and go. And then what the public is left with is, that's what they're left with. So I encourage the planning board to make sure that Mr. Conley walks the straight and narrow when we get to the permitting and whatever he's going to get.
Okay. We do have a communication from Malcolm Larson, which is apropos of the building. And this communication is dated March tenth, twenty-eleven, to the planning board, Re. One thirty-one Elliot Street. And Malcolm Larson, who used to be the fire chief, says as follows. "I continue to be concerned with the dangerous deteriorating condition of one thirty-one Elliot Street. Important public safety questions are not being asked. And I respectfully request that Conley Construction is questioned and required to make clear their efforts to meet the minimum acceptable public safety standards for their vacant buildings. Like many residents, I was dismayed by Stephen Conley's disrespect at the planning board hearing last week. I am now totally appalled by him cutting down the two-hundred-year-old tree under discussion. For Mr. Conley to state that he was concerned with the possible loss of life should this old tree fall down, at the same time he lets his building deteriorate to such a dangerous condition is hypocrisy. I believe the following questions are appropriate to the owner of this vacant factory/warehouse that has been left to deteriorate over the past twelve years to answer. The residents of Milton and our Boston neighbors deserve answers. One, is the fire alarm system at one thirty-one Elliot Street fully working, and when was it last tested, serviced by a certified fire alarm technician? Has the sprinkler system been maintained in working condition, and are there documents, records as evidence? Is the building in a stable, safe condition, and are there any structural engineer reports? I sincerely believe that the planning board should end all discussions on the new building proposal until these important public safety questions are answered and violations remediate, remediated, or the building is demolished." And then attached to this, he attaches provisions in NFPA, National Fire Prevention Association One Fire Code, between, in section ten thirteen. And then a number of, an analysis of a fire, analysis of vacant building fires from the NFPA, National Fire Protection Association. And then a number of news stories, references to a number of news stories about problems, vacant buildings that catch fire pose. And it does seem to me that we should ask the fire chief for answers to these questions.
I think I have your answers.
Yeah, but all answers are not what we want. We want some, some written answers here. As I understand it, it's a dry.
System.
System, which if there's a fire, someone has to fill up with water, and then the water will put out the fire. Is that the idea?
Yes.
And how long does it take to fill up the system?
I don't know.
And when was the system last filled up?
The, the town went and tested the main box back in January.
Okay, but what about, what about criticizing the system?
Nobody has tested inside the building. We know that there are heat sensors inside the building. There is no, there's nothing in the sprinkler system, because there's no heat in the building. So the system is dry. How long would it take to charge that system? I don't know.
Doesn't the system have to work?
Doesn't it have to work?
Does, is it a requirement that the system work?
That's a Mr. Conley question.
Well, no, that's, that's a legal question.
Because of the red X, the town is not going to take and put a fire truck close enough.
We need water inside. In other words, rather than have, just letting it burn itself out, one would hope that the fire suppression system inside the building would work, right? I mean, isn't that what it's for?
I think theoretically, it does.
This isn't really your question, but the question is, if they have to have a fire suppression system in that building that works, we should, we should know that that's the case. And if they don't have to, they don't have to. But it does seem to me that, that, you know, safety is of concern here, because a bad fire there could kill people. So I think that we, we need to get, how about, what other questions? What does the board think? What do they want to do about this building? Do we want to find, do we want to be satisfied that all legal requirements for protection of this building against fire are being met?
I think if the former fire chief has raised some questions, we should make sure that we get the answers to.
I think that that's right.
I think that's only reasonable.
I think that's right. Anyone else?
No, I agree. I think, you know, if, if there's a requirement that the system, the fire suppression system be workable, then it needs to be tested. He's raised the issue of whether it's been tested, so that we know it works. And I think, I think if it, if it has to work, which makes sense, then I think it should be tested, to make sure that it's operational as required by the law.
I think this is actually the second time the fire chief has raised these questions, and I'm not sure we got the answers completely. I think, I know we discussed them. I don't think we got them in writing, the answers to his first set of questions, and now he's raised them again. So I think that we really ought to know this. I don't know about stopping the process. We have legal obligations and time.
We won't stop, we won't stop the process.
He requested that. I don't think we can do that.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not.
It's not an option for us, but I think we could at least request that those questions be answered in writing.
Okay.
Question? Bill just alluded to the fact that the, that the town did some testing in January.
Just on the box outside.
And that's working, right?
Yes.
The test was, found it was working. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think immediately, town should test the hydrants within a quarter mile of the building. So often you hear fires where the hydrants were not working, so on and so forth. They should be tested immediately. I also think that the building should be, come under immediate inspection by whatever agency can, can go in there and make it tested to see what chemicals may be in there, to see what other hazardous materials may be in there, whether it's animals, rodents, whatever. That should be all examined immediately, as quick as possible. Thank you.
One other question, Mr. Chairman. If the town went out there in January to, you might not be able to answer this question, but if they went out there in January to test that fire alarm system.
No, just the box outside.
The box. So, did they go in, did they?
No, they did not go in the building.
Did they ask for any, when the last time, the pressure testing has been done for the piping, which would be, why did they test the outside?
There's a requirement that Mr. Conley pay a fee for the box outside. He paid the fee. They checked the box outside to make sure that the box worked. That box is connected to heat sensors inside the building. As far as we know, all of the heat sensors do work. They're not about to take consent.
How do we know that?
They weren't going to take and send anybody into the building, because, one, it's pitch black inside. There is water all over the floor. I know that there's ice covering certain areas. The floors are gone in other areas. There's different levels inside. They're not going to send people into the building. When I talked to the fire chief about it, his comment was, they would get as close to connecting something to that system, but they have no.
The standpipe.
The standpipe outside, but they have no intention of putting. of putting a vehicle within the fall zone of the building itself. They're not going to let a truck get trapped within the fall zone. So they may not even connect to the inside system. They may just fight it from outside.
The standpipe may be too far away?
It may be too close, it may be too close to the building.
That's why it's too far away from the engine?
No, too close. The engine would then be within the fall zone of the building.
In other words, the, the-
Building could collapse. No, the building could collapse on the truck and they're not about to have that happen.
Have they audited Mr. Conley to do any of this stuff? Have they asked for any testing?
No.
All right, well-
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Does anybody know what's inside the building?
I would say Mr. Conley does.
Can we rely upon what he tells us?
Well, that's, that's-
Well, the, the fire department has been through it. The fire department has been through the building.
When was the last time, Bill?
I don't have that answer.
We got a report, we should get that report if we can.
Let's, 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 let's get some answers.
All right.
Because safety is very important. And, yes.
Seems to me, Mr. Chairman, we need an expert to expedite this. We've got all kinds of experts for the tree, which was not hazardous, and now something that is hazardous, we're trying to do it on our own.
Well, we've got one expert for-
Malcolm.
What?
Who, Malcolm?
No, he meant one expert for the tree.
We've got one expert on the tree, twig.
Right, but what I'm saying, we gave all consideration to saving the tree, but now the big hazard has been alluded to here is the building itself, so, but we're not making any effort.
Is the building, is the building what?
Hazardous. Is the building hazardous?
I, on the very last question that Malcolm asked was something about the structural ability of the building.
Structural ability, yeah.
I did go to the building commissioner and ask him if there were structural reports on the building, and he said no. But that doesn't mean that the building is in, it's not going to fall down, it's not going to implode. Those are both his feelings towards the building.
He thinks, he thinks that it's not going to, or the fact that he hasn't looked at it doesn't mean that it, it won't?
I think he's, I know he's taken and walked around the outside of the building. I do not know if he's ever walked inside the building.
I suspect not, given the hazards within the building. I mean, if there's water, if the fire department's not going to go into the building, then I suspect the building inspector's not going into the building either.
I don't know if he's ever been in or not.
Unfair to request that, yeah.
But the sort of expert you're talking about would cause some doubt. And I'm not sure it's within our purview to, to do that. But the first thing to do, I think, is to get some answers on the fire suppression system and the, when it was last charged.
Yes, we should ask the town to test the hydrants.
And I think that making sure the hydrants are in proper working order is not a, is not a bad thing. And the other thing to do is, if they won't put a pumper next to the standpipe, there is, even if the thing were pressurized, it wouldn't do any good because of, they wouldn't pressurize it because of the, not wanting to put the pumper there, only having two. So I think that we, we need to know that that, that system is available to work if there's a fire, yes.
But in the meantime, Mr. Chairman, do you think that we could continue with the process at the time to-
We, we can, but you have to bear in mind that they've come, they've come in with a new plan tonight that they're going to introduce to us. We haven't seen it. They didn't get, they didn't, I understand that. But the process would have been advanced significantly if the plan had been filed two weeks ago or whenever they determined to come up with it. But they're going to give us information tonight. We can't do anything about it. We haven't had time to look at it. But we're certainly going to hear them out on what they may have in mind. So-
Let's do that.
Continue.
Bill, let's proceed. Maybe we can get the building down quick.
I just want to touch on one comment that Mrs. Brink made. And that is that I did pay for a police detail for that job. Okay, so it's a four hour, a four hour minimum.
All right, well, we will, your, your comment is disputed, but we're not going to, we're not going to pursue it. Proceed.
Okay. Warren Daniel, present the bill.
I've got some handouts, too. I know you haven't had a chance to look at these, so, and I hope you can figure out where they, they're actually stacked opposite, opposite directions so that when the changes, that's a set, you know what I mean? You can figure out where the sets are.
I'll see what I can do.
And then there's a tabulation.
So smart you are. You compile the sets, please.
I, I, I think I've been delegated.
I think there's six that stay, I should. So, again, Warren Daniel, Daniel Arkenstein.
Is that one set?
That's one set.
This new scheme, if you go on Scheme B, reflects the 1.5 FAR, which takes it back 15% approximately over what we had before. And reduces the overall size of the building and reduces the unit count. Reconfigures a few things, but by and large, it's very similar to what we had before. I don't know, can you all hear me without the microphone? Try to turn this so people can see it. Basically, the change has been that we shortened this west end of the building by 18 feet. The remainder of the building, other than some proposed changes to the towers and the other corner, the northeast corner, have been made, suggestions which we can get into. But just to give you a run-through, the ground floor, which is here, has, the yellow here is business space and it's 5,000. The gray area is parking, indoor garage park. On the next level up, on the first floor, the gray again is parking. The yellow is, again, business use. And the green is unit, one unit, one residential unit. On the second and third floor, which are identical plans, so they're just drawn once, there's 11 units with two one-bedrooms and nine two-bedrooms. They're all, of course, in green. And then the, the brick terracotta color here is a corridor and common space. And then on the fourth floor, as it was before, this wing drops off. And this is the fourth floor. And that is eight units, all two-bedroom. So that's the basic layout of it. A change, I guess, an inherent change is that we've made parking on this level in the front here, which we didn't have before because we had more space originally in the scheme to get the parking in. So we wanted to provide enough parking for the, all the residences within the building. That was the goal. And then we have a second sheet, second board, which shows, it's probably hard to see, but shows a site plan. And we also had the former drawing, the, the last version of it that we saw. So you can see essentially that this, and this last 18 feet has been removed. And the parking has been reconfigured a little bit in order to get the setback from the road, from Elliot Street, and from the neighbor, 20 feet in both directions. And that was to give more setback and more buffer. We have 31 parking spaces, outdoor parking spaces, shown here, and then the building. And then we have two sketches that address the concern that we've been talking about in the past, about the look of the tower on the corner, large corner tower, and then the other corner here. What we've done with this corner at Central and Elliot is to raise from about four to about eight feet the plate height, the roof height, and give it more prominence by doing that. And just also to steepen the pitch of the roof some to, to give it, again, more, more mass and more prominence, which I think will anchor that corner more, more notably. On the, the other corner, on, right on the corner of the bridge, which has been discussed as kind of needing some presence and some kind of gateway feeling, we have produced a corner bay, basically taken the bay that was right about here in this unit, the bay being these bay windows, which happen all around the building, and put it at 45 degrees, similar to this corner piece, and, and given it a similar roof, a pyramidal roof to this one, so that it creates more presence from that vantage point coming across the bridge. This is a 15-foot wide bay. So, again, it's 45 degrees to the corner, symmetrical to the corner. You can see in the plans a little bit right here how that is configured. So that's the gist of it. You have questions?
Yes, the commercial, if I'm reading this correctly, it looks as though the commercial space has decreased. Is that correct? And by the commercial space, I mean the total square footage of commercial space. Is that correct?
Well, we, it is decreased from the last scheme, but it is increased in the sense that we originally had it, as you remember, only on the, when I say originally, when we first came in, only on the ground floor.
Right.
And then we discussed putting some on the first floor. So what we have now is 5272 on the ground floor and 2588 square feet on the first floor. And the total there is, is 7860, 7,860 square feet, combining those floors. And the requirement is 50% of the principal floor, which is 7,855. So essentially, what we have on the first floor, let me get this other board up, is, is three units. Two of which, which is why it's drawn this way, two of which would be used for business use, probably professional office, and one for residential use.
I'm, I'm a little surprised at the residential use there. I would have thought that that would have been more appropriate for commercial use, being on the first floor, being right next to the other commercial spaces. I'm just pure curiosity, wondering how attractive that's going to be, one residential unit by itself, bordering onto a commercial use, when it might be more effective to have a commercial there?
Well, it's pretty isolated from this, this business use by the fact that there's two exterior walls and one interior wall, common wall. I don't feel like it would be a conflict.
But isn't that the main entryway to the building? Right along that same, yeah.
Yeah.
So you've got the, the foot traffic going past it. And I'm just wondering if the foot traffic going past it would be more appropriate for a commercial use than it would be for residential use?
From a soundproof standpoint, or?
Well, just from a point of attempting to revitalize this neighborhood as a mixed-use district. It seems that having the commercial use be completely accessible, I mean, that's, that would be a perfect place to be completely accessible to people who were going to the other businesses in that area, rather than segregating it as a residential use. So that's just something to consider. Also, I'm concerned in, obviously, we've lost the bonus. We've discussed why. But in the bonus being lost, I'm concerned that some of that loss is being taken by the commercial space when we're trying to revitalize this as a, a commercial district with the housing attached to it. So I, I would have preferred to see that the 15% loss be taken in the residential rather than in the commercial. And that's why I find it concerning that there's residential rights, that one isolated residential unit right where the, it might make the most sense to have another commercial unit.
Could I jump in here with the fact that the zoning requires that in a Central Avenue planned unit development, business use shall be required in that portion of the street level of buildings adjacent to and accessible from a street? And parking spaces 21 through 26 are in an area adjacent to a street, and they should be business use, as well as the storage area should be business use, as well as parking spaces 19, 20, and the other one, all should be business use.
That's right, we actually discussed that. We discussed these parking spaces, 19, 20, and 34 potentially, I believe last in December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But these, we also discussed these, 21 through 26, and the storage area, they're adjacent to the street, they have to be business use.
Those I'm less concerned about, just because, I mean, not, not-
That's definitely what the zoning said.
Absolutely, but, and, and, you know, definitely happy to continue discussing it. But because they are set further back from the street, but this, this portion, the, the residential right on that level, I'm very concerned about that being residential rather than commercial.
Well, but, you know, having seen these for 10 minutes, I'm sure that we're going to be more than-
We'll find more things to be concerned about.
More than concerned by, once we get a proper plan, these are just concept drawings. Once we get a proper plan to study, then we can, we can make some, some comments. I, I, yes.
Since we are talking basics, this is our first time really discussing the building design because up till now, you know, we've been talking about how much commercial space, we've been talking about the street. I think that we should ask that the proponents prepare some alternate massing studies of how a building and how a program of this site might fit on this site. Because I feel that this is 100% the wrong building and the wrong use of this site, as it is. And I'd like to just take a second and discuss why. Let's see what we got here. On the site plan, and it's very hard to see, but the current building that's out there, the mass of the building is back here. This building is 70 feet further away from this edge than the current building is. And the current, largest mass of the current building is back in here, where it's isolated from the street and doesn't overwhelm it and is hard up against the railroad tracks. And by moving the mass of the building here, it just overwhelms the corner and overwhelms the site from, from my point of view. The only, the complaints that we seem to be getting by the public on Thursday- The only, the complaints that we seem to be getting by the public on Thirty-Six Central are that it's too big and too massive. And the builder placed on the site as it is here is even more massive than Thirty-Six Central because of the base floor height and the change in grade, the site, the section of the building along Central Avenue is even taller and more massive than the Thirty-Six Central. The second part in terms of the existing development, this is just to orient people, here's Elliott Street, and I'm sorry, this is hard to see, and, yeah, showed up on there. Here's Central Avenue, Brookhill Road, here's the Fallon Building, over here are the cleaners and the service station, this is One Thirty-One Elliott, here's the Wine Shop and Realtor Building, this is the O'Neill Block with the pizza and insurance company and all that, and this is the site of Thirty-Six Central. If you look at the context of the site, all these adjacent parcels on all four, the other three corners of the site are all one-story structures with no opportunity for a larger development because of constraints of Pine Tree Brook and the river and the size of the parcels and no place for parking. There's no way that they will ever be anything more than one story. So to put a four-and-a-half to five-story structure on there just overwhelms this corner much more than anything else. It's my belief that the mass of the structure should be here and we should be lower along this part of the development. The other thing we notice out there is since the area's been getting some reinvestment and being upgraded with the cakes going in and with the new businesses and where the Wine Shop is and with the streetscape, we see these businesses and we see the public trying to come out and find usable pedestrian space. Cakes has put benches right out on the street here, the coffee shop, Radio Coffee House has put benches out on the street, and because of last-minute changes, there was supposed to be a bump out, there really was a pedestrian plaza, and that disappeared from the plan. The elder services and the real estate people have put tables and benches because they want to get life on this, out on the street. Historically, the Hendry's property has provided that outdoor seating with benches, you know, with a green environment, with a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. And this is the last opportunity for us to do something out on the site that creates a friendly, green pedestrian environment. So it seems to me that we should be looking for some massing studies to find ways that the program space on this site, including the required parking and the building itself, can fit on the site in a comfortable manner. And to me, that means using this corner area for a green pedestrian plaza with some planting, some benches, maybe some seating, really special feature, and then build along the street here reinforcing the scale of the rest of this with perhaps two-story, the two-story commercial space, and that way the square isn't overwhelmed by a five-and-a-half story building, and even that with this tower on top, it's going up almost six stories. And so I would like to see some low-level development here, like two acres, two stories, and then when we get back twenty feet or twenty-five feet from the street, then bump up to the maximum four-story building and put the mass here. That way the mass won't overpower both the vehicles, it won't overpower pedestrians on the street, and the problem that we hear from the public on the mass of the Thirty-Six Central, I think we can address that, and we'll create an area that's more pedestrian-friendly, more environmentally friendly, and more in scale with the adjacent development. Thank you.
Do you want me to leave this?
Uh, fine.
Well, I know that in five, oh, says landscaping shall enhance the design of the building and provide attractive features which help integrate the Central Avenue Business District with nearby residential districts. And I don't see that that's occurred. So I'd agree that the building probably has to be repositioned so that you can get some landscaping areas in which are, do what the zoning requires.
On that part that's landscaped already on the current landscaping plan there, that little courtyard area, is that meant to be open to the public or is that for the people who will be living? How are you envisioning the use of that space right now?
Well, I think it'd be a combination. It'd be primarily for the residents and the owners there, but it wouldn't be gated off, so it would be accessible to the public certainly. And it would be benches along here. So this was thought of as the park-like landscaped area in here. And just to go back a little bit, we met, as you know, a year ago or so with the Revitalization Committee here in town, I'm standing right in front of it so no one can see. And I think there was general consensus then that we wanted to create presence on this corner and, which is what we did. It has a courtyard, which is again a public amenity, brick courtyard here, a three-story and a four-story element, but the consensus really was that the building wanted to come to the street and give it an urban feeling right here, not be set back and have a park here and create sort of a suburban character to it. I mean, that was always the discussion that we've been having.
I'd say in on those revitalization committee meetings, and they were reviewing the building that you designed, and you worked very cooperatively with those to make changes in the building, but they didn't, they didn't look at and discuss the context, you know, of where it sat there, and they didn't have the reaction from the public that we were getting now in terms of the scale of the Thirty-Six Central. And, you know, again, that's just a concept, you know, the planning board has the jurisdiction over looking at this. I, I think that that building as designed, it is exactly what you worked out with the revitalization committee, but I think it is just totally the wrong building in terms of scale, in terms of pedestrian amenity, in terms of relationship to the street. And their thought was, you know, something that people immediately saw, and it said retail. I think a green space out in front with the entrances to the retail behind it says friendly, welcome, come and enjoy, and people come into the space and then enter all those things. I just, my feeling is that that's just really harsh and cold and out of scale with that whole commercial district side. I personally, and I'd like to hear from other members, you know, I'd like to see, before we go into details of, you know, the building and is this parking space what, I would like to see some massing, alternative massing studies on the way that this program can fit on the site so we can have a comfortable relationship between the street and the building and the scale of the building, and then, you know, start getting into more of these details.
Well, I've got to agree that I think that the time has come to encourage the public, but not tonight, to encourage the public to look at these plans and tell us what they think. Give us comments on these particular concept drawings. And if the public thinks they're great, that of course will be something that we will take into account, but if the public doesn't think they're so great, we will take that into account too. So I think that on the fourteenth, we're going to make these available at the, we will put them in various places.
On our website, for starters.
We'll put them on our website, for starters. The idea is we want comments on the general plan, not details like windows, bricks, et cetera, but just on the, what do you think of this as, is this a good way to start?
On the feel of the project.
On the feel of the project.
Rather than the specifics.
Does this project have a good feel or do we need some significant changes? And, yes.
I just want to add, I appreciate the fact that the revitalization committee was looking at a more urban aesthetic, and it's true that this part of Milton does absolutely border onto an urban neighborhood, but pocket parks are not unknown in urban design, and so that is something that I think could fit in. However, we end up structuring it between your designs and the public's and ours, but I think a pocket park is something that we should absolutely be considering here as something that would be attractive not only to the residents of the new building and to the people coming to shop, but to the town as a whole. So looking at that would be helpful.
And if you, if you come in with massing showing that this is, this is, in your view, the correct massing, that would be useful, but we, we will work with what you, we won't make you go out and detail these things because I think that we've got enough for people to look at it and determine if they think that we're on the right track or if they feel that we're not, to give us some input on that. So, yes.
Mr. Dan, how many pages is this new submittal?
Drawings?
Yeah.
Seven, seven sheets.
And he didn't give us the landscape plans.
No, this is the same, this is the same as the one you have already.
Okay.
I think there's-
I have an extra sheet here.
Gotcha.
I think there's eight, but I'm missing two in mine, and I know Pete's because I took his.
I have seven.
You have seven?
I've got six.
Do you have that one on the left?
Don't look at me, I, I, that's the way he told me.
That one, yes.
This is it.
That isn't part of it?
These should be there.
Okay. That's the one I just stole from Pete.
Okay. And then there are four, four plans.
There's your seven. Somebody have that L1 or two L1s in their packet? My other question is, do you have this available in a PDF format?
I can get that, I don't have it right now, but I can do that tomorrow.
Send that to me.
I can do that.
Can I put it on the website?
So that's, that's the way we're going to, we're not going to take a lot of comments on the basis of ten minutes acquaintance with the, with the proposal. We're going to encourage people to look at these plans, these concept plans, and come to us on the fourteenth with-
At eight?
What?
At eight.
At eight, I guess.
And again, where would they be able to view this besides the town's website? Is there any other place that could view it?
I think at the town planner's office, and can we put it, can we put some in the library?
I see the plus is here, do you think that the Times might give us, give them like a full page?
A full page of what?
Why don't you send them a copy too? Because thousands of people read the Times. You're just interested in the architectural conception of the exterior.
The seven, no, the seven, the seven sheets. Yeah, the whole thing.
You want the public to, to look?
Of course.
No, why?
Why shouldn't they?
Well, they can see it in the architectural conceptions.
This, they can't, they have no idea what's inside that without the floor.
Give them all the information.
Give them all the information, let the public decide. Okay.
Chief, you want to plan a clarification, please?
Yes.
Earlier, I took down the report, the agenda for the, now you're making the fourteen, and the last six forty-five, Thirty-Six Central, seven five, three eighty-six islands.
Well, Thirty-Six, wait, fifteen minutes is enough.
For which one?
Thirty-Six Central.
Any of them.
Was three eighty-six already posted for that time? Is that why?
No, I'm writing, I still haven't finished the ad for scenic wall or the amended site plan.
Yeah, because right now you've got it in fifteen-minute increments until we get to seven thirty, which is why I suggested eight o'clock, because Beechwood will take more than fifteen minutes.
Well, Thirty-Six Central will take more than fifteen minutes.
I just make my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, Thirty-Six Central right now looks like it's an abandoned building. Why don't we try to do that and get them on the road so they can finish it?
Yeah, they're first, they're first up on the fourteen.
It's a question of how much time to allocate to them.
Until we can, why don't we give them an hour at least? Because the building is, they're just going to keep coming back, and we're going to see that unfinished building. Let's, let's give these people some direction so they can finish some of these buildings.
So maybe then-
Do they need more than half an hour to talk about that they want to put?
It's a public hearing.
I understand that.
So give them half an hour.
Do you think they're going to need more than half an hour, since they've already had the revitalization committee, they've already had this group and they've had the neighbors come out to look at what the pillars are going to look like? We know that they're going to put the stone back on the front, and we know they're going to put the stone on the side.
They're putting the stone back on the front? Since when?
They are. The stone's coming back on the front.
Really?
We haven't received anything.
I know.
So when were you going to be told this, other than just now?
As soon as Paul gives the stuff to us.
Well, maybe they're not ready for a hearing if we, if they don't have the materials that we can review. And I do see that the sidewalk that they did out front isn't the materials that were approved, so, I mean, they've got a, you know, they've-
What sidewalk?
They put some kind of concrete pavers down on the sidewalk.
See.
The side?
Well, from the sidewalk to the building.
I like the newer.
But, you know, they haven't yet shown us what they're proposing for materials.
Well, they showed us a couple of months ago for a sidewalk that, but two of you guys didn't, and I kind of liked that, so they're not doing that one anymore.
They're doing that weight, but they're not doing that-
They're not doing the siding, they're doing the stone.
No, they got the stone.
We should probably-
That's new information.
They'll, they'll have stuff for you.
Give them half an hour, okay?
How many times have we changed it, and how many times have they changed it?
They haven't actually changed it yet.
Look, they're the people who have done the latest change, Bernie.
But how many times?
We have never changed it.
The latest change.
We have, we approved something and all they've done is come in with changes.
Right.
And we approved the changes, and we have approved numerous changes.
I'll spend a few extra hours here trying to knuckle this stuff down.
Look, if they don't know what they want to do, why do you want to force them?
If we're giving them half an hour-
I want them to finish the building.
That puts Thirty-Six at seven fifteen.
Okay, tell them, call them up and say, would you please decide what you want to do?
You've got a scenic wall, which-
Could take forever.
They've got a garage, no, it shouldn't.
Okay, all right, so seven fifteen, so that makes three-ten Granite Ave, seven-thirty, and Beechwood.
What's three-ten Granite Ave?
It's changing the canopy, it's the gas station.
The gas station.
So how long is that going to take? Another half hour? Because then that puts Beechwood at eight and Elliott Street at eight thirty.
That amended thing shouldn't take-
No, I think the amended can, can, it should take ten minutes, shouldn't it?
It should only take about ten minutes. They're turning it ninety degrees.
But we haven't seen anything yet.
They're turning it ninety degrees, and they're taking, instead of having three pumps, they're going to have four, there's two islands.
Okay, so if we do three-ten at seven-thirty, that leaves Beechwood Estates at seven forty-five and One Thirty-One Elliott Street at eight fifteen.
Well, they have a diesel, a diesel pump.
I think we should call out for Pete, so first-
Yes, but you already approved the diesel.
I realize that.
Does that answer your question? Sorry, it took us a while to get there. It would be a busy night, yes.
All right. You've got that bill?
Eight fifteen for One Thirty-One Elliott.
Yes.
And we're going to-
Is that good for Mr. Conley?
Are you okay for eight fifteen?
And it would be nice if there are any architects who want to come in and share their views. Architects are, architects are good, good testifiers.
They're used to making presentations, yes.
Exactly, and they have ideas.
Keep on point.
All right. So that's as far as we're going to go tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to look at the agenda, we're going to, we're going to, we've, what else is on the agenda?
Board of Appeals process, apparently.
Oh, okay. Just with respect to the Board of Appeals.
Yes.
We're going to get notice of variance applications earlier than three days before the hearing, which means that- ... a application that looks like it might be something we might want to communicate with the board about. At our next meeting, we will have a discussion as to whether or not we should invite the applicant in to discuss his, to advise them that we're thinking of writing a letter to the Board of Appeals and inviting the applicant to come in to discuss the application with us if he so cares, so chooses.
He or she.
He or she.
Or they.
Or they.
It.
Or it. And, and then we would decide what to do after we've given the applicant an opportunity to be heard.
And I'm assuming that this is going to be fairly rare and that most of what the Board of Appeals does doesn't normally require input, but that from time to time, there may be an issue that we think is of such importance that we should comment.
Or that we feel that the Board of Appeals might be helped with our comment.
I'm sure they're always delighted to receive our comments.
May I, um, I think this was occasioned from the last meeting that I was here, and we decided to send a letter to the Board of Appeals about a matter, and my understanding is that the meeting that I wasn't here, the attorney came in and convinced us otherwise or something, is that what happened?
The attorney, the attorney came in, but my, my, we had a, there was a procedural, it seemed to me that the attorney's best point was that you should have invited me in to discuss this because my application didn't really say what I was going to do.
What a hardship that was being asked.
If you, if you had, if you'd invited me in, I would have given you all the details. And the applicant was there, and it, it just made sense to not pursue it, but to get a better process, to get better notice of what's happening earlier, and then discussing it in the board with the participation of the applicant, if the applicant wants to.
So the outcome is that we've decided not to take a position to the Board of Appeals on that matter.
The outcome is that they're going to have quite a tall house on Heather Drive.
We did send the letter to the-
It is going to be the tallest, it's going to be about 45 feet from, from the base to the top.
But remember it's in a-
It's in a hole.
It's in a hole, exactly, as Bernie, what it was Bernie said is my niece said.
It's in a hillside, so the-
Hillside.
As you go up, as you go up the hill, you're probably 35 feet to the top, but when you're going down to the base of the hill, it's going to be about 45 feet to the top. So it's going to be a, it's going to be an interesting thing to view from the golf course.
You know, I have a better suggestion, Mr. Chairman. Why doesn't the chairman go to all the Board of Appeals hearing? No, seriously, where are you going to hear all the testimony? And then you can act without-
That's a wonderful idea.
Isn't that wonderful? Why clutter up, we can't get things done.
And then we- That's an idea which is actually out of order.
I'm ruled by the chairman, though.
So, I think we're, we're there.
Are we? Well, it just so happens that I have a motion ready waiting.
I'll second this.
I move adjourn. Oh, 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 I don't move that we adjourn, sorry.
Sign a form for me.
Form?
Somebody has my L1.
I don't have your L1, I checked. I think they didn't give you enough L1s.
You mean, this L1 here?
That's not L1.
No.
That's this thing.
I might have it.
Yes, okay.
Do we all have to sign that?
He wants us to sign it.
I want you to make the motion and, and bring it forward, please.
Oh, well, this is the motion that you need.
To allow Kevin Burn, town administrator, to withdraw without prejudice the wind turbine application.
Oh, so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
L1?
L1.
What else, what else do you have for us, Bill?
Um, Alex, there are multiple sheets, hang on.
How many of these do you need, Bill?
You gave us like five.
He's going to give you-
Three.
How many did you get? Three.
Why don't you have like streaming video on the town website so we can, you know?
Can I have your blue pen again? If I have to sign something?
Is this yours? No, this is mine, this, this looks clean, is this yours, Bill?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I signed one too. That's yours. This is mine.
You'll play that again.
All right.
There you go.
Did somebody make a motion?
No, we're still with-
We have to sign, we can't, we can't, the jury will figure-
We're signing the thing because of your-
Bernie? It was very helpful of you to put the names down so we wouldn't argue over who signed which line, that was very clever.
Well, actually, as long as people sign on the right line.
Are you saying?
Is this a pecking society, is this a pecking?
So I sign it on the line that's under my name, right?
Or possibly above it, depending on how you're feeling today.
All right, now we're going to entertain your motion.
Oh, right, that one, the move to adjourn, yes.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.